Good morning, everyone. It is 9:00 AM. We're going to start now. Excuse me? We're going to start. We're going to start this public hearing now. The... Could I ask... Could I ask everyone to please stop talking? One issue is the mics are very sensitive. So if there's people speaking between as other people... Particularly as other people are speaking, it gets picked up on the mic and the court reporter can't take it down. So I'll ask everyone to please be quiet and respectful of other people when they're speaking. I'll start the... I'll go through the introduction of the public hearing and then we will get to the individual comments. My name is Mark McDamar. I'm with the law firm of Barclay-Damon. We are counsel to the Anadaga County Industrial Development Agency and we are the moderator of this public hearing. There are a variety of OCIDA... OCIDA is the Anadaga County. I give you a variety of OCIDA personnel who are here staff and personnel who are here as well. This hearing is being held by the Anadaga County Industrial Development Agency, which I'll refer to as OCIDA or the agency, pursuant to Article II of the New York eminent domain procedure law, which is the EDPL, and I'll call it that as we go forward, in connection with the potential acquisition by negotiated purchase or eminent domain of, one, the permanent easement rights over two parcels of real property located in the town of Clay, Anadaga County, New York, bearing tax map numbers 031.01-16.1 and 030-01-01.0; and, two, any and all interests that may be held in the parcel located within the town bearing tax map parcels 046.02-01.0 that are not already owned by the agency. Collectively, those are called the project property interest, and that's how I will refer to them. The real property parcels identified as SPL numbers, the three numbers I just went... I just identified, located in the town are referred to below as the property. The purpose of the potential acquisition of the project property interest is for the unified and comprehensive redevelopment of the White Pine Commerce Park and proposed Micron New York Semiconductor Manufacturing LLC project, which I will refer to as that... as project. When I talk about the project, that's what I'm talking about. And I will describe in greater detail shortly. For purposes of this presentation, I will refer to the White Pine Commerce Park as the park and Micron New York Semiconductor Manufacturing LLC as Micron. Micron is a wholly owned subsidiary of Micron Technology, Inc., which is the fourth largest semiconductor company in the world and the only U.S.-based manufacturer of digital memory. The agency's sponsorship and participation in this public hearing are based on its role as the potential condemnor and the requirement of holding a public hearing pursuant to the EDPL Article II to describe the proposed acquisition of the project property interest and to inform the public and to review the public use, benefit, and purpose to be served by the proposed Micron project and the impact of the project on the environmental residents at the locality in which the property will be... or, excuse me, the project will be constructed. Notice of this hearing was properly published as required by law in the Syracuse Post Standard on November 9, 11, 13, 16, and 18, 2025. Proof of that publication will be made a part of the record of this hearing. In addition, copies of the notice of today's public hearing were timely served on each of the assessment record billing owners or licensee of the project property interest and their respective legal counsel by certified mail return receipt request pursuant to EDPL 202. Copies of those letters and certified mailing receipts will also be made part of the record of this hearing. Anyone attending the hearing who wishes to speak should identify themselves, their address, the organization with which they're affiliated, on the sign-in sheet at the entrance to the room. The sign-in sheet... I now have the sign-in sheet. And if you didn't get an opportunity to sign that, you can... You'll... I will... At the end of, when I go through all of the names of the people who did sign in, you may come up and speak as well and we'll just get your name at that time. Owners who may subsequently wish to challenge condemnation of any real property interests they have in the property and the project property interest via judicial review may do so only on the basis of issues, facts, and objections that they raise at this public hearing. Again, I will call the speakers in the order in which they signed in. Each speaker is limited to approximately three minutes. A lot of people here with latitude, extra latitude, being given to any representative to the legal representatives and the whosos with the SSO property and to Mrs. King, who may have heard counsel wish to speak. There are a number of letters, emails, including from counsel for Mrs. King, which have already been received by the agency and which will be made part of the... this public record. The stenographer is here to take down everything that's said and to preserve your comments. Again, you'll be speaking right here at the mic. The comments will be part of the public hearing. If anyone has any written materials, and I've already received some, if anyone has any written materials which they would like to submit instead of speaking or in addition to speaking, please give those to us before you leave. And again, those will be made exhibits and part of the public record. Prior to this hearing, as I said, we already received several emails and letters, including, not limited to a November 18 letter from the Newman &amp; Lickstein Law Firm on behalf of Azalea King. Again, all of those materials will be part of the record. This hearing will be left open to receive any additional materials or written submissions people may wish the agency to consider as part of the hearing, but those materials or written submissions should be forwarded, mailed, or delivered so that they are received, not mailed by, received by the close of business on or before November 26, 2025, and they should be sent or delivered to Robert Petrovich, Executive Director, Anadaga County Industrial Development Agency, 335 Montgomery Street, Floor 2M, Syracuse, New York, 13202. Now, with respect to the project, a more... A greater, more detailed description is as follows. Micron plans to invest approximately $100 billion over the next 16 years to construct and operate a large-scale, state-of-the-art, dynamic, random-access memory, which is RAM, the shorthand version, semiconductor manufacturing facility at the park. That's the mic which was... I've referred to as the Micron campus, what I've just described. In addition to the Micron campus, Micron also plans to construct a rail spur and construction material conveyance facility to reduce truck trips and support construction of the Micron campus. That I refer to as the rail spur site. A childcare center, healthcare center, and recreational center to service employees, that's the childcare site, and to lease existing warehouse space within 20 miles of the Micron campus, which would be the warehouse site, collectively with the Micron campus. All of that is the project. The application requests the agency acquire the project property interest by eminent domain or negotiated purchase to effect... to effectuate the project. The 1,377-acre, approximately 1,377-acre, Micron campus will include the park, approximately 28-acre portion of the parcel located in the town of Cicero, Anadaga County, New York, bearing tax map number 091.01-02.1, the nine... Approximately nine-acre Burnett Road right of way, and an approximately one-acre portion of the property... Or, excuse me, of the parcel located in the town bearing tax map number 048.01-02.1. The rail spur site will consist of approximately 38 acres located west of 8625 Quonoy Road, tax parcel number 046.02-03.2. The childcare site will consist of approximately 31 acres located at 9100 Quonoy Road, tax map parcel 042.01-13.0, and the warehouse site will be located at a yet-to-be-determined industrial zone... industrially-zoned area within 20 miles of the Micron campus. The Micron campus will be served by a new industrial wastewater treatment plant, the IWWTP, and other wastewater and reclaimed water utilities located at the existing approximately 76-acre oak orchard site owned by the county in the town located at 4300 Oak Orchard Road, that's the Oak Orchard site, and new industrial wastewater and reclaimed water conveyance between the Micron campus and the Oak Orchard site. The parcel bearing tax map number 046.02-01.0 is located within the park, and the parcels bearing tax map parcels 031-01-16.1 and 030-01-01.0 are located between the Oak Orchard site and the proposed Micron campus. These three parcels, together with the remaining Micron campus, the Oak Orchard site, the rail spur site, the childcare site, and the warehouse site are collectively referred to as the project site. The agency is considering an application from Micron in connection with the development and operation of the Micron campus component of the project. As I stated, approximately 1,339 acres of the 1,377-acre proposed Micron campus will be located in the park. The agency now owns the entirety of the park, including the parcel bearing tax map number 046-02-01.0, which is the subject of a license... or, subject to a license. The agency intends to acquire by eminent domain or negotiated purchase any and all interests that may be held in that parcel not already owned by the agency in order to further the redevelopment of the park and proposed Micron project. In connection with that component of the project, the agency has offered the owner of that licensed interest compensation well in excess of its appraised value. The county currently owns and operates an industrial wastewater treatment plant on its old... On its Oak Orchard site. Both the construction and operation of the proposed Micron campus will require increased utility infrastructure. In connection with this need, as I stated earlier, the county intends to construct a new industrial wastewater treatment plant at its Oak Orchard site. The Micron campus will also require a new reclaimed water conveyance between its location at the park and the Oak Orchard site. Acquisition of the project property interest in the parcels bearing tax map numbers 031-01-16.1 and 030-01-01.0 is necessary because those parcels are located between the proposed location of the Micron campus and the old... and the Oak Orchard site. And the new industrial wastewater reclaimed water conveyance to service the Micron campus will be constructed and operated on those parcels. The anticipated public use, benefit, and purpose of the project includes, but is not limited to, one, construction of new infrastructure in an industry of local, state, and national importance with such infrastructure constituting the largest domestic producer of RAM chips that have crucial applications in military equipment, cybersecurity technology, the aerospace industry, and artificial intelligence. Two, investment in workforce development generating 4,000... Approximately 4,000 onsite construction jobs, approximately 9,000 permanent onsite operations jobs, and spurring the creation of approximately 40,000 vendor supply chain, construction, community, and other jobs in the regional economy and throughout the state. Three, other substantial economic improvements within the region, including $10 billion approximately in real GDP impacts, additional tax revenues and investments of $500 million approximately in local and regional initiatives that advance identified community needs, all of which will advance the job opportunities, health, general prosperity, and economic welfare of the people of the county and the state. And now, ladies and gentlemen, we will hear from anyone who wishes to speak, as I described before. The first one is John Russo from SSO Holdings.
Um, if we can get...
Excuse me.
If the... If everybody knows who the speaker is, just for the record, say his name.
Yep.
Can you repeat it?
Good morning. My name is John Russo. And I'm here on behalf of SSO Holdings, a family member of the properties OCIDA is considering for easement takings. Please include this verbal submission.
Turn it up. Turn it up.
Sorry about that, guys.
No, it's not your fault, buddy. Go ahead, Mr. Russo.
Do you want me to spell my name again? All right. My name is John Russo, and I'm here on behalf of SSO Holdings, a family member of the properties OCIDA is considering for easement takings. Please include this verbal submission in addition to the written and email submission in the official EDPL hearing record. Dear Mr. Petrovich and members of the Anadaga County Industrial Development Agency, we are respectfully asking OCIDA to not move forward with the eminent domain because the agency has not met the legal requirements under New York's eminent domain procedure law and State Environmental Quality Review Act, or SECRE. Before any property can be taken by eminent domain, the law requires a full and thorough review of the potential environmental impacts. This did not happen in this case. The wastewater and reclaimed water pipeline proposed across our property was listed as a connected action to the Micron project. Yet the environmental analysis of that pipeline is incomplete, segmented, and lacking detail. OCIDA's own documents state that easements, quote, "would not change the current use," end quote, "of our land." But that statement overlooks the reality that a broad easement like this reduces future development potential, restricts how the land can be used, and creates a meaning for long-term impacts. Critically, the environmental review also failed to consider the two natural spring-fed ponds and associated wetlands on SSO's property adjacent to the Oak Orchard wastewater treatment plant, and the risks posed to those sensitive areas if there were any leakage or spills from the proposed wastewater conveyance pipe. In addition, the analysis does not address what would happen in the event of a catastrophic failure of this industrial wastewater line, an essential issue for public safety, environmental protection, and property stewardship. Because OCIDA has not taken the, quote, "hard look" at these issues, its environmental findings are incomplete, and the law does not permit the agency to proceed with eminent domain under these circumstances. We are simply asking OCIDA to follow the process that New York law requires, one that protects the environment, the community, and property rights. For these reasons, we respectfully request that OCIDA decline to exercise eminent domain on the SSO properties at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Russo, this is not normally going to be question and answer. I do have one question. You referenced the email. I have the letter. I'm not sure I have an email.
It was sent by the lawyer.
Yes, it was sent by the lawyer to the attorney's office. Yes.
Mr. Petrovich.
To Mr. Petrovich? Okay, thank you.
You know, except for you two.
To me? All right, great. I just haven't seen you. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next, I think that's Andy Tadeo or... Tadeo?
In Italy would be Tadeo, but my grandparents meant it Teddy. But it's spelled T-A-D-D-E-O. And I'm here representing myself, Emmanuel Higlin Church, in support of the King family. I live in Cicero.
Will you please speak into the... Into that mic?
Okay. I live in Cicero, New York. I previously was at 8574 Burnett Road. And so I know what it's like to be forced out of a home that you didn't want to leave. Very much wanted to stay where we were, and we plan to stay there our whole life. So I understand how the King family feels right now. And it's difficult, especially when you think that OCIDA and Anadaga County really, I think, abuse the eminent domain function. New York State has a reputation of the worst eminent domain abuse in the country, and so I really think that needs to be changed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So I'm here as a neighbor. I didn't think I knew Mrs. King, but I just ran into her daughter who I went to school with. So I do know Mrs. King. And I'm in opposition to this idea that you can sign a contract and unbeknownst to you, she lived longer than you anticipated. My mother could be just like Mrs. King. Her doctor just told her she could live to 100. So you can't do this. You can't sign a contract and then say, "Oh, well, we need the land now. We need the house now. You need to move." You need to just stop doing this and honor your contract. And even though I'm not her neighbor neighbor, I'm not her street neighbor, I live on the other side of town, I'm in the county of Anadaga and the town of Clay, and this is just not right. And I think you all know it's not right, but you got Micron. You spent 15 minutes giving Micron their advertisement of how wonderful they're all going to be, but not for Mrs. King. So you need to honor that contract. And even though I heard Ryan McMahon say he didn't sign that contract, he wasn't part of that contract, that doesn't matter. OCIDA did sign that. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Lorraine Demeter, D-E-M-E-T-E-R, and I'm speaking for the... My dear friend Azalea King, or Butch King. 20 years ago, the county made an agreement with Glenn and Azalea King. The Kings would sell their property to the county, and you would grant them lifetime use of the family home and property. The Kings kept their part of the bargain. Now someone more important than the Kings has come along, and you want to reneg on that agreement and turn Mrs. King, at 91 years old, out of the home she has known for more than 50 years. Lucky you, Glenn King has passed away, one down, one to go. Your more important client has now redirected the money meant for Anadaga County to Idaho and put a two- to three-year wait on the New York State project. If they can postpone, so can you. And this is two to three years. Micron says, "Just kidding, we've changed our mind. Remember that you tried to do the same thing to an old woman today."
Mike Demeter, D-E-M-E-T-E-R. 20 years ago, OCIDA signed the contract with Glenn and Azalea King, buying their property with the understanding that they could live out their lives there. OCIDA now wants to reneg on that contract. If this is how OCIDA conducts business on a small scale, because this is relatively small compared to the whole project, how can the people of Clay, Cicero, and Anadaga County trust them to be honest and have integrity on a $100 billion project? I can't see how that's going to work.
Don Western?
I'm Don Western, W-E-S-T-E-R-N. I live in Fayetteville, New York. My name is Don Western, W-E-S-T-E-R-N. I live in Fayetteville, New York. Third time. My name is Don Western, W-E-S-T-E-R-N. I live in Fayetteville, New York. Does that work? For a period of time, I was the director of economic development for Anadaga County, a job that included acting as staff to the county ID Ed. In that capacity, I arranged for the acquisition of land for the new industrial apartment in town of Clay. As part of that work, I met with Azalea and Glenn King in the kitchen of their house and on Clay Road to discuss acquisition of their two properties. Prior to meeting with Mr. and Mrs. King, the agency had purchased properties to the north and south of their land. The first of these purchases was completed in November of 1999. Acquisition of the two King parcels totaling 47 acres, including the residence, was essential for the agency to achieve the continuous ownership of a 251-acre area along Quonoy Road and Route 31. The purpose of the acquisitions was to establish control of a large vacant industrial zone site that could participate in the state's semi-New York chip fab site development program and enable the county to compete on the national market for major business investments. The site was then named Clay Business Park. Negotiation of the terms of acquisition of the King properties included the right rocket seat by Mr. and Mrs. King. Adjacent to the parcel with their residence was this three-acre parcel whose owner had no desire to discuss a sale. This parcel had a depth of 352 feet. The assumption was that if a significant development project occurred, the portion of the King parcel equal in depth to that adjacent parcel would be reserved for the residence, leaving it in place as a pre-existing use and preserving the right of occupancy. However, the adjacent three-acre parcel was acquired by the agency in 2021, and a house on it was demolished. With these changes and the scope and magnitude of the Micron project, that strategy for preservation was no longer possible. There's been no lack of clarity or transparency as to the current goal of the agency regarding its land acquisitions in Clay. To the large site that could compete in the national, international site selection market for a very large project, with Micron, this goal has been achieved. At a scale that requires material recalibrations of physical facilities and land use in our county that extend far beyond the site itself. But what matters here is that those recalibrations require the agency to hold all rights to the properties on the site, including at 8700 Quonoy Road, ending the life occupancy of the residence that was included in the 2005 transaction. I did not have the resources or negotiating skills to convince the Kings to relocate in 2005, and thus this anomaly remained for another time. Disrupting the settled life of an elderly person is difficult, painful, unkind, and a project that could leave the existing residence undisturbed would be my preference. That is not possible. I think it fortunate the arrangement lasted 20 years, and I hope that in a suitable new residence, Mrs. King will have many more years. To make this possible, the offer of just compensation should be sufficient for acquisition of an acceptable residence for Mrs. King. There should be no consideration of the prior payment made by the agency in 2005 or the subsequent benefits realized by the tax-exempt status of the property since acquisition by the agency. A final note, I left the county in 2008. I have no connection to or relationship with the county team that has handled the Micron project since its inception. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi. Name is Sue Hammond, H-A-M-D, and I'm not representing an organization, so to speak. I'm here basically, I debated for days whether to come because I knew this was going to be a done deal. This is going to be a done deal. And I knew what's interesting is the members of Osida are not sitting up here.
Yeah, that's right.
They're not here. The main towns aren't here. So, you know, so I came, frankly, I came to look in the eye of the people, unelected people who came here, who have come here and are going to kick people off their property and destroy a whole bunch of the environment, turn this into a sacrifice zone. And it just, it gets worse. Apparently, you've already approved, you already voted to approve two billion dollars in sales and property tax breaks, in addition to twenty-two billion in subsidies from the state and federal agency. And it says the taxpayers will pay for about half of the estimated fifty-one and a half billion dollar cost to build two chip factories. And two is only the beginning. Okay, then there's supposed to be two more. So now, okay, so you sold to Micron. It's a little confusing to me, but anyway, the original ones are going to be, eight-hundred-and-twenty acres are going to be apparently built. And I don't know what you're going to do with the rest of them. God only knows what other goddamn project you have for those. And now you also awarded three point six million dollars in tax breaks to build the rail square. Okay? And, oh, oh, let me get back to, and I'm, this is not my first rodeo, okay? We get back to the seeker floor and they extends twenty thousand pages that was done in environmental assessment. Okay? I'm wondering if that is going to, if that costs the same number of trees that you're going to have to cut down to build this project. But Micron still needs approval of the U.S. Department of Commerce. And they plan to start work in December. No, and it has to hurry up. We have to hurry up and do this because we have to cut down all of those five hundred acres of trees. You have to get them cut down before March, before March, when the bats come back, who've been coming back for ages and ages and ages and probably come back longer than anybody's lived there. Okay? So we better hurry up and cut down those trees and we better hurry up and kick Mrs. King out of her property and all the other people off the property. We better hurry up and do that so that we can benefit from our tax breaks. We still need a variety of agencies, okay? A variety of agencies. We still need approval from a variety of agencies. And I'm wondering, and I'm sure they're going to get them all, I'm sure you're going to get all approval from all the agencies that you need because you already have. And the same thing happened with the Amazon warehouse. They had to get a variance from the building and safety codes, okay, which required fire escapes two-hundred-and-fifty feet, but their codes only four-hundred feet. Uh-oh, so they needed a variance. Oh, dear. So they did the same thing, mitigate the old mitigation routine. So also, but basically what they came back and said, well, hardship. We'll give you a variance because if you can demonstrate a hardship, a hardship for Amazon, okay? And the hardship for Amazon was spending what they said was, I think, thirty million dollars to build four additional fire escapes. That was a hardship for Amazon. And so they were granted a building and safety code variance. And I think we're probably going to say the same thing with this building here. How many variants and safety code variances are they going to need? Okay? And they're claiming hardship. A multi-billion dollar company, a multi-billion dollar company can't afford to do this and they need all these tax breaks. So, yeah, I live here in the town of Clay. I lived here just about all of my life. And you're making this a sacrifice zone, okay? A sacrifice zone, and not just for Mrs. King and the other people who've lived here most of their lives and love this area. A sacrifice zone for, you talk about construction jobs? The first jobs here that are going to be here are going to destruction jobs, destruction, because you're going to have to destroy all of that land. Dig it all up, cut down all the trees and destroy that land, all right, and the soil, et cetera. So they're going to be destruction jobs before you can start construction. And I, it's, it's taken you, what, eight years or something since you first decided you were going to do this? And you can't wait a few years longer? Why is that? Why is that? Why can't you give this woman a little bit longer to live in the home that she loved? I mean, I just have a little, I don't have, you know, I just have a house in the New York Syracuse, but nobody could pay me enough money for that house because it's a home. You have lots of time and you're going to take lots of work to do it, but my time is up. So the last thing, I just think that you folks and the ones who aren't sitting here and all of our elected representatives from county and state, okay, you know, should, where are they? Are they here? Our elected representatives? The people that we elected to represent us? Are they here? No, no. And I think that you folks, all of you folks at Osida, they ought to be here when those bulldozers come and start ripping things up and tearing trees down and ripping, those people should be here. And as a matter of fact, that hearing should have been held there, should have been held there on the site where the destruction is going to occur.
Thank you very much for your time.
And I hope to get soon.
Probably have another problem. You'll be able to hear me either. Judy Boyke, J-U-D-Y-B-O-Y-K-E. I am a resident of sixty-three oh three Muskrat Bay Road in Borlton. I am a past supervisor and town counselor in the county's trust. I am a licensed New York State Realtor for the last thirty-three years. I've also retired from GE Heavy Military, so I've worked with multiple contracts in real estate and through the federal and state government. Never in my life have I ever heard of a binding contract by both parties being broken or one side pushing someone else out for the benefit of themselves for greed and power. I have a written statement that I've probably written forty times. It said, I don't understand why if Osida already owns this property, what the hurry is, it's already been mentioned, to relocate Mrs. King. There is several things to start with. We don't have the roads to accommodate. We don't have the water to accommodate. We don't have the power to accommodate. We don't have the sewer to accommodate, nor do we have all the permits in place. We spoke about the wetlands. Are they going to bring Noah Ark in here and move all these animals to a new location or are they just going to plow them under, which is horrific? To move wetlands across the river over into Swigel County is unnecessary. And by the way, those bats, as you spoke of, it's true. But when those bats come back to house in their trees and they're gone, they're going to be in your trees and your house if you live in the town of Cicero and Clay. I can speak to that from authority because it happened to me. So I say, this is the performance of our Anadaga County and local government is shoddy, second-rate, despicable, and unacceptable performance by our Anadaga County Executive, Ryan McMahon, and Osida and Ida, which is Industrial Development Association. This behavior is unacceptable because they are lying, bullying, it's a betrayal, and it's cruelty to Mrs. King. Their word means nothing. To openly force a ninety-one-year-old woman from her home where she's lived with her husband and be trusting in Osida to sign a legal binding contract to live there her life and to live it out. I guess Osida figured that because they were aging then, that they'd be gone by now. Well, we're going to outlive her because most of us are going to live to be a hundred. No offense, I'm sorry, but no offense to Mrs. King or all the rest of us, but God bless us to live this long. I'd like to ask Osida to put this binding contract in place and be here along with our county executive, which I was hope was going to be here because I'd like to speak to him personally, and just discuss why the importance of throwing Mrs. King out when all are going to do is bring a load of dirt, bring their gold shovels, and throw the dirt over their heads maybe, just to say they broke ground. We all know that this is going to be pushed out and pushed out. Also, it's obvious that Osida and any other government department, along with the county executive, can change the rules to support nothing but their power and greed. Micron may eventually be a good thing and someday it won't be for the rest of us. I feel bad and I think that this is a despicable display of legal, the illegal ability because you can use it to force people out who have trusted in our government. Thank you.
Dave Arnold.
David Arnold. I live at ninety-four eleventh Horseshoe Island Road, Clay, New York. I have a farm at eighty-five ninety-eight Deswigle Road, Route fifty-seven. I've lived in this town all my life. I'm a farmer. I'm president of this town. I've attended the town board meetings here since nineteen ninety-eight for ten years straight. I had listened to all the bullshit that this town has put forth. Now, I'm not going to go through everything that everyone else has already addressed. I second everything that everyone else has said, but I would want to put in the record my Facebook account, David Arnold. I have written on Micron, I have written on the town of Clay for the last, oh, I don't know, since Facebook's been around. And I would like every single thing that I've written on Facebook to be part of the record. And it's a lot, I'll tell you. Now, I knew Glenn King back in two thousand and five when he was in discussions with Osida on buying his farm. He did not want to sell, but they pretty much told him he had to. Now, I'm grateful that the former director of Osida is here and gave his two cents worth. I addressed the problem with him at Three Rivers when they wanted to buy the apartments at Three Rivers. And I listened to three hours of crap at that hearing of people in favor of throwing somebody off their property. Yeah, three hours. And one person spoke and told the truth, and that was me in front of that Supreme Court Justice. And I just said the truth. I just stated the obvious. And after three hours of listening to the crap from these people that wanted to get rid of this apartment, and the same thing is going to happen to the Kings, trust me. This is exactly what's going to happen to the Kings. The Supreme Court Justice ruled against the town to take the property, saying that it's against the law, you can't do this. But you know what happened? The very next day, the town bought the property for what the people wanted in the first place. So we're going to go through all this crap. We're going to probably go before the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court is going to rule against you. And then you're going to go up to the Kings and you're going to say, okay, what do we got to do to settle this thing? Because we're going to get your property, trust me. We're going to get it. If we have to win there with a dozer and you're still in there, we're going to doze it. This is what's going to happen. So I'm just warning everybody, we're going to go through this, and I guarantee you, the Supreme Court Justice will rule in favor of the people because the people are right in this case, just as they were right at Three Rivers. And look what, at Three Rivers, we could have had a ton of apartments at Three Rivers right now, but what do we have instead? We have a park, a beautiful park that everybody can enjoy because the Supreme Court Justice ruled in favor of the people. Now, you, you don't care about the people, you just care about a hundred billion dollars. What I have suggested, what I have suggested in my Facebook account is that Micron sees the problem here. They're not going to kick out this ninety-one-year-old lady. There is no frickin' way. They, because it would be bad publicity for Micron.
All he is is an overpaid lawyer.
So, excuse me, sir?
Continue, Ms. Brown. You've passed your time. We wrap it up here. And one other thing is you've referenced some other materials that you wanted to make part of the record.
Exactly.
You talked about your Facebook account. You can submit anything you want, but it's got to be submitted, it's got to be submitted.
It's real simple. You just go on Facebook to Dave Arnold.
I'm telling you, Ms. Brown.
Real simple.
Mr. Arnold, anything you want in the record, you send.
I want it all in the record.
Then you send whatever it is you want, send it. But I'm not doing my investigation to go.
You don't have to investigate, you hit a button.
I'm explaining to you, if you want anything else in the record besides your comments.
You can tear down one eight hundred acres of trees and you can't push a button on Facebook.
I apologize, I can't read the handwriting exactly, but is it Jane or James? Inee or Me?
Is it J-A-N-I-S?
Yes, thank you.
L-U-C-E?
Yes, it is. That's it. Thank you.
Good morning. I'll spell it again. Just feel like a lot of darts are being thrown around. For me personally, back in two thousand and nineteen, very dear friends booted out of the only homes they ever knew. Back in the sixties and seventies, let's all go back there because I look around, we're probably all about that same age group. Don't mean to put my back down, just trying to get the microphone.
No, that's fine.
Back in those days, I grew up on Seventh North Street before I came Henry Clay Boulevard.
Use the mic, please.
I grew up on Henry Clay when it was Seventh North Street, back in sixties, seventies. Back then, all our parents raised all of our kids. And that includes Mrs. King, Mr. King, everybody at the post office, everybody at the fire department, everybody up and down that street. You knew if you got in trouble on that bus, it was getting to your house before you got off that bus. I stand here to support Mrs. King because Mrs. King supported me as a seven-year-old, a ten-year-old, twelve-year-old, fifteen-year-old, raised us all up. So it's now our time to raise her up. No way, any of those kids that the Kings raised up are not going to stand up for her today, or tomorrow, or next week. It's absolutely insidious that you would even consider tossing a ninety-one-year-old woman out of the only home that she's known for sixty years. Second. Third. Second, third, the treatment plant expansion, and it really kills me to say this, we could very well have another 88-year-old woman who's lived in a house for 63 years be affected by the increasing size and god knows what map numbers those refer to. All I know is, that's my mom's property that backs up to that treatment plant. So, do we wanna go through this again as we fight for Mrs. King? Are y'all gonna come fight for my 88-year-old mother? And we're trying to protect her, the house she's lived in for 63 years. Do we wanna go here? Do we wanna keep playing this? Let's talk about the environment, let's talk about the people, let's talk about the people that have invested their lives in this community. You can't toss people around like they're nothing. We see it every day nowadays. People are not indispensable. So, I will end there, and I will ask every single one of you that are here today, go get two more people, because what we really need to do is we need to go fight New York State and have them repudiate this ridiculous eminent domain law that includes. Okay? From the people who have lived their entire lives, I don't care where you are in New York State.
Grandfather.
They can just come walk right on in, say, thank you very much for paying your taxes, but we're taking it. Here's your pittance of what you're gonna get. We all need to join together and get three more friends and go to New York State and hit our local representatives, hit our county legislators, hit everybody we can hit to get to New York State and get a real eminent domain law that is for public use, not millionaires and billionaires coming in and destroying the only place that people ever knew. Thank you.
Thank you. Melinda Morris.
Good morning, everyone. By way of introduction, my name is Melinda Morris. I am from Romulus, New York, and I'm a friend of the family, by way of a single member of that family, but that's okay, because this is a good cause, and it's an important cause. I live in Romulus, I'm a licensed clinical social worker. Before you assume I'm a bleeding-heart liberal, please, you need to know that I'm also a 30-year Air Force veteran. I have sworn to defend and support the Constitution of the United States. And as I said, I'm here to speak on behalf of my friend's family and the last person that just spoke, who may also get run over by eminent domain. New York makes it very hard to defend the rights of condemnedees. Condemnedees? Is that how you say that word? Anyway, the people are getting run over. It will be easy for you to prove public use. New York has a very broad definition of that, but why this property and why right now? I wanna know that, and I have not heard that. Granted, I have not read all the documents, but I don't think that it needs to be a rush. We don't have to go to the bathroom, and this is not a matter of national security. Micron has said construction is already delayed two to three years, and the environmental impact that these officials have voted to accept. Will all those promises really materialize to benefit the local people?
No.
As stated in previous news stories, taxpayers are covering more than half the bill. Why should our tax money cover private industries that includes elder abuse? Elder abuse, I say that because it's due to the forced eviction, harassment, bullying, and stress created by this proceeding and previous issues going back 25 years. Our elders, the property, and the lives they work for should not be disposable. Our elders deserve our respect and honor. Our own constitution protects these inalienable rights. Current county officials, who are apparently not even here, personally may not have signed this contract, but the predecessors of the agency they represent did. The county executive's comment that he didn't sign the deal is a total abdication of his responsibility of that office. The county officials have the authority and the responsibility to honor that contract. If they want to renegotiate that deal, then it behooves them to come up with a current fair market appraisal to the highest possible use by New York law and offer that to Ms. King and her family, but this eminent domain proceeding is in bad faith. None of us can predict how long we will live, and she apparently has longevity on her side. Unless this mess ends up being the death of her, then her blood is on your hands.
Thank you.
I wanna first thank everyone who came here to support my Nana, and Miles is great Nana, appreciate you being here. I'm here to represent Glenn King. Glenn was a farmer. He was a loving father, and as I am a father now, am I, now as I am a father now, I realize how much he did for his family to set them up for success for life. To think about the fact that he did everything he could to make sure his wife was taken care of for the rest of her life, and the only thing he couldn't defend her against was the government. My father, my stepfather, said when this project first came in, "You can't get in the way of progress." I thought that was admirable of him. But as I dwell on that, we're not getting in the way of progress, progress is ripping through my grandmother's home. We chose to live there long before this was ever talked about, and it's terrifying that you guys can just rip through someone's home. Poor initial planning by Ryan McMahon and the county board has set the situation up to a point now that you feel there's nothing else that can be done except for to kick her out. If I decide to build on my neighbor's land tomorrow for a greenhouse or something that will benefit the county, I'm sure you will not be telling me that it's okay because it's for the better use of our community. Courts work off prior precedents, we know that. It's terrifying to live in the town of Clay right now, knowing that you are setting a possible precedent that me and my family can be ripped out of our home next based on more money needed. Government is for the people that are already living here, not for the people we're trying to attract to this community. I have never in my life felt less represented by the local government than I have today. I please just let everyone think of Glenn and Azalea as we continue.
Thank you. Tina Sabourin.
My name is Tina Sabourin. It's spelled on the paper, but I'll spell it again, S.A.B.O.U.R.I.N. I have lived in the town of Clay, Village of Bruerton, for a really long time, and I don't wanna tell you how old I am. I, a really long time, about 40 years. I am speaking today on behalf of my neighbor, who is a family member of Azalea. I look in front of me right now, and I see, I don't see three seats filled, I see seven empty seats. That tells me that this horrific scenario is not important to the people that really need to hear it. I do not understand why a contract is no longer a contract, and I agree with the precedence that this would set. A contract was signed, lifetime doesn't have an age. There is no age on lifetime. When you say lifetime, that's the life-time, not an age. You can't say, "This woman has lived too long." She's a mother, she's a grandmother, she's a great-grandmother. She will never have lived long enough. I hope so. The real questions that the board has to answer of themselves and then adequately explain to the public is why Osida isn't supporting its legally binding agreement to Mrs. King, and why they are apparently harassing her at best, or leading the charge for elder abuse at worst. Why isn't Osida coming up with different, if not creative, alternatives that allow the county to honor its commitments?
Thank you.
I'm here to object to eminent domain, as I feel it's unconstitutional. Our friends at the Institute of Justice have advised us that this is a perfect case for us and all of us here to take to the Supreme Court. I would like to just reference Don Westru's comments, just to clarify something. There is nothing in my mother's lifetime use contract that has anything to do with the neighbors and the three parcel, adjacent parcel being there. Thank you.
Thank you. The next is two names, Sherry and Eric Sterns.
Good morning. My name's Sherry Sterns, this is Eric Sterns, S.T.E.A.R.N.S. I have lived in the town of Clay for 55 years. I've lived on every side of the boulevard since 1976. Two years ago, Micron bought a house across the street from me, forced them people out, and is now still sitting there as an empty shell.
Excuse me, just one person at a time, okay? So, Sherry Sterns is gonna go first, and then Mr. Sterns, you can follow her, okay?
It's sitting there in empty shell. The in-ground swimming pool is still full of water. It's a mosquito fest. What is gonna happen to my house when they build that substation across the street from me? The value of my house, I have a son, I was going to leave that house to my son. Where is that gonna, are they just gonna take my house? Where am I gonna go? Where's my family gonna go? My mother lives down the street, 83 years old. She's been a town of Clay resident forever. We grew up with the same family, we grew up with the King family, we know Butch. They went to the same church as my grandmother. My grandfather and grandmother were farmers in the town of Clay, the Gaylord family. Where Wedman sits was my family land. They've already been forced out. How many more do they have to take? Leave Butch alone.
My name's Eric Sterns, I'm her husband, and what she said is true. They took that house two years ago, because I had to have it. It sits boarded up. You know, somebody, somebody's kid could fall in the pool. Who are they gonna sue? You? You know? We live right next to Frank's property that you're gonna try to take, okay? That, like I said, who's, who's gonna wanna buy that house with a crack plant across the street? You know? Our house has gone up in value since we bought it. Now, it's gonna go the other way because of your companies. You know, and as far as what you're doing to the Kings, that's unbelievable. If you and I entered a contract, and I came through and said, "Oh, well, that contract don't work for me no more, I wanna change it," you wouldn't allow it, would you? So, stand up to your contract and let the woman live out her life.
Thank you. The next speaker, I apologize, but I can't read your handwriting at the end, it says "family," so the person, whoever signed in after the Sterns. I don't know who that person is, all right. Fine, okay. So, let's go on to the next, it's Tom Danzman.
I don't know if people know what's going on besides here. I live in Deswiggle County. They're over there buying property like crazy right now. It's called a 501(c), I don't know what it is. They're paying $15,000, $16,000 an acre for land they could've bought for two, which I don't understand. And my understanding is they're gonna make a swamp out of it. So, to replace the swamp, you're gonna tear out of there. My understanding is that swamp's 200 acres, and you gotta dig out 20 feet down, how much fill is gonna take to fill a hole that big? Do you know? I heard they're gonna bring it in on rail. That's why I put in that stupid rails person, but I don't know, it's just, and they're buying this land, and they don't pay taxes on it. It goes off our tax revenue. They don't pay tax. Who's gonna make up hundreds of acres of land they're buying right now from us over in Deswiggle County? You know, because you people told them not to buy it here, because you don't wanna piss off these people. You don't wanna piss me off, and you did. Yeah, eminent domain, I don't know if you watch, there was a thing on television not too long ago, I think about two weeks ago, but these people come onto this lady's land, and the lady goes, "Who are you?" They said, "We're here to, we're gonna put a power line or something," I forgot exactly what they're gonna put through. She said, "Well, I don't know anything about this, you can't do that." They said, "Man, get off the, I'm in a domain, we can walk it wherever we want." That's bullshit. You know, that's, that's wrong. And actually, they didn't do it, because some, I don't know if you heard, some singer wrote up some song, because they went to another older lady, and she didn't know what was going on, you know, she's old, and they're gonna take her land too. But this singer come out and started a song, and those people backed up. No more eminent domain over that, you know? But you're taking our tax, you know, and I heard you're gonna make a swamp out of it. I live over by Bell Road, I heard that's gonna be a swamp. Now, I know the guy up on top of Chesville Road, he died of triple E. We don't need any more of our frickin' mosquitoes, you know? You keep your mosquitoes here. You know? Where's that McMahon? I'd really like that guy to be here. I don't care for that guy, you know? Everything he does, and you people go along with it, you know? All of a sudden, that law, the people backed out after they got, after they got everything they wanted. Now, we're not gonna do that, you know? Now, in a fish tank, nobody wants a fish tank, you know? Who wants a fish tank, raise your hand. You know, who wants, who wants a fish tank, raise your hand. You see any hands going up? Tell that McMahon he ought to, he ought to be here, you know? And don't take that lady's land away from him. I worked at Miller Hurry for 15 years, 17 years, actually. Actually, I was on Channel 5 a lot or 3, I can't remember who, about six seconds, but they, and they moved out 20 years, you know, they, they made a deal like you're going to make with Micron. You know, you're going to be here 20 years. What's amazing, they don't move right out after you have to start paying taxes? You know, that's, you can't guarantee nothing. And this is just, it's hurting us over in Oswego County. These people don't know what's going on over in Oswego County. They're billionaires buying all this land. Why pay 15, $16,000 an acre? That's why I, they're up to something and I just don't know what it is. I'd really like to find out what. I heard they're going to lease that land to Micron after they make a swamp out of it.
Can you, you've had your time, so can you wrap it up?
Yeah, all right, I'll wrap it up. What you're doing is wrong to the lady, to us over in Oswego County. I don't know what else to say. You just, these people don't know what everything is going on.
I'm from Oswego County too, by the way.
Me too.
Now, we got, somebody's got to make up those taxes. All this land is taken, you know? I wish I was a millionaire or billionaire, but I know the guy that bought or sold a lot of that land, you know? And I like, I like the guy, but.
Well, thank you very much.
Yep, I wish you. If that lady needs somebody standing in front of the equipment when he gets to her house, call me.
John Eagan.
Hello, I'm John Eagan, J-O-H-N-E-A-G-A-N. We've had some properties of interest in that local area. I grew up here my entire life, I've been in town in Clay, basically. At this point, just by listening to the people before me, you know, we've got a property of interest right now that I don't know may come down to eminent domain. I don't know if I'm going to get a bad deal or something that typical to what had happened to Mrs. King. The property adjacent to Mrs. King back in the day, 20 years ago, was taken by eminent domain. There was also another related family parcel. That house got taken away, there was, there was a, they settled with the family in court. The house was bulldozed over 20 years ago and absolutely nothing had ever happened on that property until recent. Basically, a parking lot, kind of go investigate the woods. I'm aware of the other properties up in Oswego County also that are being purchased, basically for, you know, to have the swamp issues that we have to keep, which is good for the environment that way. But we're destroying that whole area of woods. I don't know why they have to push Mrs. King out of there right now. Just doesn't really make sense that, you know, the, the project's getting postponed for a couple of years. Why is this so important at this point? You know, also, like everybody's saying, you don't have all the proper representation here. So the property should, people should actually be here to, you know, actually listen to us instead of, you know, get the minutes later and read them or proof them and think on it. So I'm concerned with our own property next. Who's going to be next? And these other properties of interest, other than seeing the tax map numbers, going to make some of them a little more clear if there's going to be more eminent domain coming. Can we at least see these properties and know which ones they're potentially going to be? Micron hasn't purchased anything, it's all the county at this point. A lot of money getting, you know, on hold. We don't really know what's going to happen. We've got a property now, our, our mother had just passed, 91 years old also. Lived in the town of Clay her entire life. And we don't know what to do with our property. Do we want to keep it for our family? Do we want to sell this property? Will it be taken in the proceedings of what we decide to do? So we would like a little more clarity on some of the other properties that are proposed that might maybe be used up for utility purposes. I don't want to see this project happen at all. I grew up in those woods, I saw a white snow wall in the backwoods right there where we're talking, Codnoy Road. You're going to dump 5 million gallons of liquid, water into this new, into the river system, which is a canal. And I didn't see anybody with Army Corps of Engineers say, "How can we introduce that much more water when we have locks?" It's a 50/50 chance on contaminating Young's Creek to the rivers. And right now, I mean, it's a little beyond the eminent domain part. But I want to know what, what other properties are live or potentially going to be taken next. So that's really where I'm at with it. And I just want to yield the floor only because the fact that I don't believe we have proper representation here. Because people should be listening to us. So at that point, I appreciate my time.
Thank you. Kathy Egan McDowell.
Good morning, it's Kathy McDowell, M-A-C-D-O-W-E-L-L. I'm in Oswego County also, and I see the little things happening around town. Just like everybody else has said, I don't want to repeat, but I would like to know why, right now, they have to take the acreage from Mrs. King as there's plenty of other things to do with all of the acreage around it, up and down the road and all around the sides. Another side note, just a little bit more emotional. The Kings were already asked to leave their home back in the 60s. They lived on the corner of Vert Plank and Codnoy. They had a beautiful farm there, but Niagara Mohawk asked them to move because they didn't say anything about eminent domain. I was pretty young, I don't really remember. But they moved up the road and now she's asked to move again. Another thing I don't think people realize is that it's not always the money that people need to move. Sometimes, when you move a 90-year-old, their head does not fathom that very well. You put them in a different place and they're not the same anymore. They cannot collect their thoughts, their dementia may pick up, and it's not a good thing.
Thank you, Ms. McDowell. Is there someone, there was somebody who said they wanted to go last. There's one other person who wrote their name down, but I can't read it.
How do we get added to the list?
Sorry?
Can I get added to that list?
Yes.
All right, I'd like to go too.
Yeah, anyone else who wants to speak will be able to come up now too, but I just wanted to finish the list. So let's, let's start. Is there anybody who did not put their name down on the list who'd like to speak?
Oh, perfect.
This gentleman here first.
Oh, thank you.
How you guys doing today? My name's Dwayne Whitmer. I'm here to speak on behalf of the homeowner because I'm not a psychopathic shitbag. Do you need me to spell my name? D-U-D-U-A-N-E Whitmer, W-H-I-T-M-E-R. Thank you guys for coming, it's good to see turnout. I came here from Buffalo to, to record what's happening so people can know what's going on. And I want to really explain to you guys what's really happening here. Your, your leaders and politicians are weak, cowardly people who can't be bothered to show up and look you guys in the face when they do show up. If you analyze what's going on in this area, you're seeing businesses leave, homelessness increase, poverty increase. New York State is at least a business-friendly state in the nation. So what your politicians do is they whore themselves out to businesses. They offer them something called corporate welfare and tax subsidies and tax breaks. What that does is allows them to get photo ops in front of work being done. They say, "Look, we brought a business here, we sold our soul to this business. It came here and it boosts your economy for a short term." Your suit here mentioned that's what they're going to do. They're going to bring environment opportunities, business, jobs, that's what they're going to do. For a very short term, that's what happens. And what places like Micron do is after the subsidies run out, after the money goes away, they leave for the next opportunity. This happens all over New York. This happens everywhere we go, we see this all the time. You guys are being used because as your county executive mentions, Ryan McMahon, he didn't sign the contract. You know, because soon after he tout this great thing he is doing, he is going to run for another position. He's using this to propel his career forward. And they appoint weak-willed people who can't be bothered to show up to do their bidding. That's why we're here. You guys have the balls to show up, they do not. It's simple as that. It's also why they do things like hold meetings at 9:00 AM on a Thursday. They want people to be at work to be able to pay their bills. They don't have a, a nice government-funded job that they can do on a Monday basis. I will say this though, I'm going to segue into extremism, anger, hatred, rage. We talk about, we see rising political violence, rising tension all across the country. We wonder why it happens. And people want to blame the internet, they want to blame music, they want to blame video games. Why is things happening? Well, what radicalized people like me was seeing a 91-year-old woman pulled from her house so Micron can come in and pretend to give a shit. So I want to say, I'm going to end with this, is that Marvin Heimeyer may be dead. One of my heroes from Grand B, Colorado. But I do hope his spirit lives on in Clay, New York. And I hope you guys keep up the good fight and we're here to support you any way we can. Thank you, guys.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Please come up.
Lauren Marvin? Nancy, you come?
All right, I guess I'll go first. My name's Don Hughes.
Hi.
Hello. Hello, my name is Don Hughes, I live in the city of Syracuse. And I've been there since 1985. And you can go back, okay? And I'm here to speak in opposition to Osida's move to condemn the property of Azalea King. This action is unnecessary, uncalled for, and cruel. And I'm very disappointed that the whole board of Osida is not here, although I did notice that Mr. Petrovich is in the back. Ms. King has lived in this said property for 60 years. The county, this agency, signed a deal with her and her husband 25 years ago or so to live out the rest of their lives in their house. Osida is now moving to evict her in violation of that agreement. Not satisfied with that legal action, which they'll probably lose in court. The agency is claiming a need to condemn the property and forcibly remove her, a 91-year-old widow, from her house. You've heard the testimony about that. This is outrageous and frankly, it's cruel. It's also unnecessary. The construction schedule for Micron has been pushed back two years. Why are we doing this now? It's the rush. You've got 1,377 acres at White Pine Commerce Park to work with. Surely, Micron's consultants and engineers can figure out a way to work around this little property. I would understand if it was sitting in the middle of the property. It's on the edge of the property. Work around it, guys. A few weeks ago, I stood right here offering testimony about the tax, the tax subsidies. And I told you that I supported the overall project. That support has disappeared. Now that I see how Osida is treating a 91-year-old lady who happens to live in the margin of the property and is kicking her out forcibly, that support has disappeared. I am profoundly disappointed in Osida's lack of integrity, lack of moral compass, all the pursuit of serving the needs of a giant and greedy corporation. I invite everyone here to oppose this, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Well, sir. What's your name?
My name is Nancy Skye, and that's spelled N-A-N-C-Y-S-K-Y-E. I hold permanent certification to work with blind and visually impaired. And I have worked with elderly for three decades. And I too stand with Azalea King to be able to remain in her home. When a promise is broken, when a word is not kept, this shows a tremendous lack of integrity. To remove Azalea King from her home, to forcibly remove a 91-year-old woman from her home would be physically, psychologically, and emotionally damaging to this human being. So I too second what the others have said. Wonderful things have been said in this room and thank you. I stood by both my parents so that they could have caregiving in their home as they aged because that was their wish. And it would be my wish too, to be able to stay in my home, to have the proper care as long as is needed. And she deserves that. She deserves to have that, a mother, a grandmother, a great-grandmother. And I don't think there's one person in this room that if someone came to their door and said, "You are going to be forcibly removed from your home," that you would agree to do that. Not one.
How are you doing? My name's Gunnery Sergeant Alex Allard. I'm a combat decorated retired Marine. I own a company in Boston and now in Brewerton. Sure, A-L-E-X, A-L-L-A-R-D.
Could you do it one more time because I didn't hear that?
Okay, so just want to reiterate, a little bit of a PTSD Marine. I've been shot, I've been stabbed, I got a combat medal from a president. So I talk fast, especially when I'm pissed. And right now, I'm real pissed. A-L-E-X, A-L-L-A-R-D. So to be clear, I just started my AI integration agency in Brewerton. When I heard about this, my heart broke. Where I'm from, we call this elder abuse. Eminent domain is for public use. I was unaware Micron was a public company. In the Marines, we have a thing, it's called honor and integrity. You make deals that you break. You bully 91-year-old ladies. Listen, I swore oath and I promise you on my stripes, my word means something. I swore to defend Americans against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And when you twist the law to bully 91-year-old ladies, you are bordering on that line between domestic. And I have hundreds of Marines where I'm from, you might get away with this, no offense, small town, New York, but the city's here now.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
This is really something. My name's Michael Greco. I represent the neighborhood group at Country Meadows. And I am really happy everyone voiced their opinion today because you took everything out of my mouth that I wanted to say. I mean, it's really great. But I just want to say one thing, I've been to one of these hearings before about Micron. And Mr. County Executive, Mr. McMahon, said that everyone who wrote down and voiced their opinion would get a response about our particular problems. My name was posted in Syracuse.com with the transportation problem here. And I never received a response at all. Like, we're all wasting our time with Micron and all these issues because you know what's going to happen? Nothing. You'll do what you want to go and do, they don't care about the people. You don't care about the complaints. And everyone, and all the people at the last hearing, you don't look at me with a deer in the headlights look. No one responded, no one said anything. And Mr. McMahon said on TV, "You'll get a response in writing about your issues." This is why this is a waste of time. This county, this town, you can't even run a road construction project correctly. You put up a traffic light and then you put up a pump house, you block both ends. And the fire department had to come by and tell you, "You're blocking the people in." You put the railroad track here, you put the pump station there, and what happens? You block the road. I mean, how is a town going to run a plant of this size and this project when you can't handle the normal problems of this community? I really have a problem. I came from Manlis and I thought I had a problem up there. And I came here because I want to get away from the traffic. Wow, what a mistake.
Next?
I'm going to repeat, J-A-
I'm gonna repeat, J-A-N-I-S-L-U-C-E.
Well, just one second before you repeat. Is there anybody else?
There's just one lady on the office. Well, okay.
You can come back at the end.
One minute.
Go ahead, quick.
Okay, this reminds me of something. Back, talking about kicking old ladies out of their house. Over on Cicero, Route Eleven, when they built the Walmart, remember where it was? The, um, the North Drive-in, right? Out along the edge, you remember Hertz the Hanson?
Yeah.
Eighty-some-odd-years-old. Guess what? She fought, and she won, and she died in that house. And Walmart came in, and they'll all the way around here, and they'll sack her little girl.
Thank you. Next?
Hi, my name, my name is Gail Riina, R-I-I-N-A. I am from the Faith Impact Team, which is a diverse group of concerned citizens from churches, nonprofits, and businesses, formed to help shape our community's growth in central New York. I am also retired Lutheran pastor and often attend Emmanuel Church, of which Butch is a member. I am here to urge you elected officials to find a compassionate solution in this eminent domain case. There is pressure to smooth away from Micron Construction, but the residents of Clay, as obviously expressed today, need to trust their elected officials. A promise was made to a couple who lived, worked, and raised their family in the town of Clay as you present this community in your public face. And the people who are long-term residents live that way, caring for each other. New people, but especially everyone when there's rapid, significant change, which we know is already happening with housing, roads, and economy developing, experience stress, and the opportunity to be a community, the opportunity to develop in a way that shows compassion is essential. People want to live in a community, newcomers as well, that cares for each other. Wouldn't it be wonderful if the town stopped this case? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jeff Parkers, G-E-O-F-F-P-A-R-K-H-R-S-T. I'm not here to represent Ms. King. I know her, she's a wonderful person. I'm here to represent myself as a citizen. I too spent a career in the military, and I learned to trust my government. I learned to trust my government. So from me watching this, I see this as a question of trust. I found it disappointing that this gentleman who coordinated the agreement, twenty years later calls it unfortunate that the county can't keep its agreement. And I've heard you mention that the Kings have been offered the appraised value or above the appraised value. So my simple rhetorical question for the county is what's the appraised value of any commitment they make with any other citizen? Because it doesn't sound like it's very much.
What do they offer?
Is it out?
Yes.
My name is Arlene D'Lo Osborne, O-S-B-O-R-N-E. I've been a resident of the town of Clay for most of my life, living on Verk Plank Road as a child, and now on Cognoy Road. This has been like an amazing meeting to come to. I've been to many, which I'll get to, but to hear the names of residents who have been there their whole life tells you, this is a community where people stayed and raised families. The King family was a central part of my childhood and of many of the people sitting here, as are the Egans, the Southerns, the Hughes, you know, the names go on and on. So thank you all for being here. I, I wanted to start, as I was sitting here, I was thinking back to the meetings that I've attended since the beginning, and one of the first meetings I went, might have been the first one, was at, I believe, North Syracuse, the Auditorium, and there was a panel, and people could come and ask questions, walk up to the mic. Ryan McMahon was there, all kinds of representatives from Micron. And my question to him was, I, you know, at the time, I guess naively maybe, I said, you know, "I understand the impact to the county, the positive impact to the county, but there have been casualties." At the time, it was residents of Burnett Road. And I asked, you know, "Moving forward in a project this large, there were likely to be other casualties." And I said, you know, I had hoped, my question to him was, "Will you take care of these families, these people, these casualties?" And his response to me at the time, he kind of chuckled, and he said, "I believe," let me find my words, "I believe if you spoke to any of the families on Burnett Road, they would all agree that they were compensated quite fairly for what they were going through." And, and that was the end of his response to me. Hindsight, as we're dealing with what's happening now, it's really disheartening to hear all of this. Again, at that meeting sat so many representatives of Micron, county executives, and they were selling this project to the community, selling it to us, all the positive things that were going to happen. Where are they now? They're not here. It was great when they were trying to sell it to us. Now that they're almost there, they don't care what's happening to these casualties. This project may be beneficial to the county, but it will be anything but beneficial to the residents of the town of Clay, who are right here in the midst of all of this. It's really disheartening, Mr. McMahon, if you're listening, that you're not sitting here and listening to these stories, and, and the impacts that it's going to have to the county residents. I came to the meeting a couple of weeks ago about the tax meeting, and I am a retired teacher from North Syracuse, and the fact that Micron will not be paying taxes for, what is it now, fifty years, that's gonna impact many things, as well as the North Syracuse School District. So, again, these people should be here, listening to us, and considering the impact that it's having on families. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Sir?
I'm Ed Stinson, S-T-I-N-S-O-N. I'm also a veteran. And I also worked with Mrs. King at the Cicero Post Office. I find it very hard to believe that you guys are gonna reneg on your contract with Mrs. King. She's a good person, and the malls around the area, they took their tax benefits, and then they closed. Shoppe Town, Penn Can, Great Northern, they all took it, and then they left. So, I just want you to stand up for Mrs. King and respect the contract that you already signed. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. Maureen Matthews, M-A-U-R-E-E-N-M-A-T-T-H-E-W-S. I was a Burnett Road recipient of eminent domain threats. There's several of our neighbors in these couple of rows here. One of the things that I, had happened to me is I moved out of Anadog County after the whole thing happened, because I said I didn't want to give them another tax dollar. I am only in my sixties, and it has been difficult for me to have made the move. I can't imagine what it would be for Mrs. King. And I knew her from the post office, and I went to kindergarten with her son. I know the family. So I'm here to support Mrs. King.
Thank you. Anyone else, sir?
I gotta leave, so I just want to say one more thing.
Your name again, sir?
Thomas Dawson, D-A-U-S-H-A-M-A-N. I just wondered why, I don't know, this is just a suggestion, but why wouldn't Micron want to build up a new school? There's two big new plants, and all the water they...
It's all floodwaters.
I don't know. Not that I want. I don't want. I just, common sense things, but why would, why would you want to do all this work? Who's gonna pay for the pipeline? Who's gonna pay for all the power that you're gonna change? We're already starting to pay for that. But, you know, you don't realize how much damage this place is gonna do, really. You don't know what they're gonna put out. You run water, that much water for a pipeline, you're gonna have problems with piping. Water does wear out pipe. I worked for Salvey Paper Board, you know, and the pipes mow up and everything, because you're running, the water's flowing so fast. I said, "It just doesn't make sense to me why you just put it up in a swig."
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else?
My name's Wayne McDonald, M-C-D-O-N-A-L-D. And I'm not much on public speaking, believe me. But to try to move a ninety-one-year-old lady out of her home is absolutely ridiculous. Eminent domain is not meant to move old ladies out of their home. It's just not. And, you know, I come from an era when a handshake was as good as a contract.
Yes.
And now you're telling me, now you're telling me that a contract's no good. I worked in construction for forty-five years, and if you signed a contract that you were gonna do something, you had to do it. And now, now you want to throw it out the window. This old lady should not be moved. I live on Cognoy Road, and it's a good thing you're not trying to take my property, because I believe in the Second Amendment. I would die with my cold, dead hands inside my house. You would not get it. So you can take your amendment domain and stick it where the sun don't shine.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yeah.
I don't mind speaking in public, but the public doesn't usually like to hear what I have to say.
What's your name, sir?
My name is John Golly. I live at forty-six oh seven Verk Plank Road. Which for the last couple of months has been Route Thirty-One Central. First of all, I want to say the arrogance of our elected and appointed officials for the importance of this meeting is appalling. And since I haven't missed an election in my sixty-eight years of living in the town of Clay, I don't think I'm gonna reelect Mr. McMahon, should he run. If he can't, if he can't look me, if he can't look me and Mrs. King in the eye at a meeting as important as this, he should probably do more than stay home. Go to hell comes to mind. The other thing I'm gonna say, and then I'll sit down, because I don't know if I can be any more polite than I am right now. I've heard all the song and dance from New York State, Anadog County, and all these people, they like to get their pictures taken when something good is happening, but as soon as things get a little warm or a little tight, they disappear and they leave empty chairs. I've been sung and danced by everything that they've been in favor of, whether it's, as before mentioned, Penn Can Mall, Great Northern Mall, whoever it is, Destiny Mall, which is going to be called Destiny Mall, because it's gonna bring one-point-five-million shoppers in every year. Okay? That's nice. And an aquarium that the people have to pay for, but don't get to say whether we want it or not. But Mr. McMahon wants it, so we'll get it. They've blown smoke up our ass for forty years about French Fort, we're gonna rebuild that, that'll be terrific for, for tourism, and all of this stuff, and they're all empty. And they've all given us so much things to be thankful for. I can buy overpriced jeans and crawl back to my car so I can stay behind, below the gunshots. He ought to be proud of himself. He really should. And so should Micron. If this is what they're gonna do, is take a longtime resident of the town of Clay, nobody's ever mentioned that her husband was fire chief for thirty years. I think they've earned the right to have their contract upheld, and there's more than one way to fight City Hall, I guess, and that's what we'll do.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Alright, bearing none. A copy of the record of this hearing, including all written materials submitted, will be available for public inspection without cost during normal business hours at the offices of the agency at three thirty-five Montgomery Street or two M Syracuse, New York, one three two zero two. It will take a few days before that record is available, because we have to get the transcript and put together whatever exhibits we get, and also to that point, the hearing is being left open for, until November twenty-sixth, so that you can provide either by delivery or mail any additional materials that you may wish to submit. So long as they are received by November twenty-sixth, they'll be made part of the record. And again, they should be sent to Robert Petrovich, Executive Director, Anadog County Industrial Development Agency, three thirty-five Montgomery Street, floor two M Syracuse, New York. Thank you very much for attending, and with that, we will finish. Sorry, did you have something you wanted to say, sir?
Yes, I thought it was quite clear, so I apologize for being...
No, no, I just, I misunderstood.
As you can see, as you can see, sir, I was not, I was not dressed and prepared for this today.
What, sir, what's your name?
You may, you may call me Teo.
Teo, okay.
And if you're a believer or family friend, you may address me as Timothy. So I thank the people that are here supporting an elderly woman. Ninety-one years old.
So I thank the people that are here supporting an elderly woman, ninety-one years old. I would like everybody in this room that supports this woman, and that includes you gentlemen, to stand, please. And if you can't, raise your hand, please. Respectfully. Nice and high, so I, you don't need to rise. And if I can't see you, there's more to the story because we're dealing with the government, and we're dealing with people that don't know how to communicate. Part, minus a few farmers and people that I learned from. I learned out of a good book, and they took that good book out of school. I don't get out much, and I have a high respect for farmers. Because next to my father, that is the most important person in this country. Because they feed you. They feed you, not your check with that little signature. This country had a wake-up call recently. And you thought it was about toilet paper and organizing your drawers before things got back to normal, and I believed that for a second. So I organized my drawers, and it kept going and going. So I said, "This can't all be on me." Because my drawers aren't organized, so I said, "There's something else to think about." And I don't know how many years it went by, I stopped going by a calendar a little while ago. So it's really unique that I find myself sitting here when I should be skinning a deer to feed somebody. I used to go out for luxury until Deer Camp was no more. That day ended. I didn't get, I didn't get the invitation due to circumstances.
Soon there will be no more deer.
Pardon me for any tainting my voice because that's anger. Because guess what? There is a time for anger. It needs to be harnessed. And by the grace of God, I'm not flipping this table over. This table!
Sir.
So compose myself and respect the authorities, may I ask three questions? To be in order and respect the authorities, three questions. May I start with one? Forgive me for not being educated and not prepared to come here. What is your name, your title, and your position, please? Nice and loud, one through three.
As I said at the beginning of the hearing, my name is Mark McNamara, I'm with the law firm at Barclay Damon, which is the outside counsel to the Anadog County Industrial Development Agency.
Thank you, sir.
Dan Coleman, I'm also with Barclay Damon, outside counsel to a side.
Nice and loud, please. I don't know why you're not mic'd, I can't hear you, though. I'm hard to hear it. I had FX teams flying over my head years ago, and my ears are still ringing.
He is with Barclay Damon. We're all with Barclay Damon, which is the outside counsel to the Anadog County IDA, as I said at the beginning of the stage. Go ahead, sir. And your time's almost up, but go ahead.
I appreciate your courtesy, and you gentlemen, I appreciate you being here. I appreciate tax dollars being spent to people that also sign a paper to put their life on the line. Thank you. Thank you. And the veterans in this room. Because I saw something the other day, it said, "Doesn't matter where and how you served," and I got a story, let me tell you. And it includes a general. To finish the story, so that's for another day. But somebody wrote, "Somebody puts their name on the line." They are putting their life when you're military, and I did that. So when these people, good people, talk about an agreement, that means something.
Yes.
But I have fallen short myself. And all you people are fucked up. And you are fucked up too, but the different, no! What are you saying? What are you saying? Why? Why am I dumb? No, why am I dumb? Why am I dumb? Why am I dumb? Why am I dumb?
Long live the bill, King!
Ladies, why am I being taken? Just tell them, they're under arrest. Tell me stop. Tell me stop. I'm stopped, I'm not resisting. I'm not resisting. Don't break my glasses, take my glasses. No, take my glasses. I will, I will now resist. Take my glasses, please. Now what would you like me to do?
Hands behind your back.
Okay, I'm going to do it slowly. I'm going to do it slowly. Yeah, hurt. You, you want to do it slowly or hard? I'm going to do it slow.
Hands behind your back.
I'm going to put my left one out first. I'm going to put my le, no, mayor, don't make me fall. This one is going behind my back. Mayor, take it, take my hand. No, it don't hurt me. Take it. Take it. Now you got a book, put the cuffs on.
Hands behind your back.
Put, I got a bad arm.
Hands behind your back.
You can call him a gay, I have a bad arm, they won't go back, not for me. Cuff him, cuff me. And if you people stand for this, God have mercy on your soul. Forgive me, official, and anybody that I offended, please pull my pants up. And I'm just going to do exactly what you say. Just tell me slowly. Tell me slowly.
Walk out the door.
You guys are not going to follow me? I have belongings right there, and I have a phone with evidence of police brutality on me. Who's going to help me? Who's going to do it now? You people are going to stand still. I was not given a warning to stand still. You're not bringing me out. You're going to talk to me and give me a water.
Try. Okay. Stop.
Go ahead. I got to catch my breath.
I know you're upset, but this isn't about you right now.
Okay.
So if you could just calm down.
Thank you. Thank you. Will you walk with me, sir?
I will make sure you're safe.
Will you walk with me? Thank you.
If you're going to walk with these officers, I will follow you.
Do we have an agreement?
As long as you're going to walk.
Do you people agree?
But please don't ruin the distance for my grandmother.
I already agreed. I'm asking them to agree.
And I'm asking you to not make this a scene when it's about my grandmother.
I'm going to say it one more time. They agree.
If you're not moving, if you start moving, I'll walk.
We're walking.
Thank you.
Thank you for not making this a scene.